Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter.
I'm here.
Councilmember Austin Lay, Councilmember Barry, Councilmember Clay, Councilmember Elrich, Councilmember Stevens, Councilmember Williams.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum of the council. I assume the other council members are either in the vicinity and will be joining us shortly or will be arriving and joining us shortly. But let's move on with our agenda. Are there any council comments or announcements? I just wanted to let people know, following up from the public comments that we had last week concerning the plans of Columbia Union College, that I will be sending a letter tomorrow inviting the chairman of the Board of Trustees of the college to join us at a council meeting. I'm hoping he will be able to be here next week, but we will have to work with his schedule. So, wanted to let people know that that very well may be coming up. The next item on the agenda is the adoption of-
Mayor Porter, I'm sorry to be a little late. I wonder if I could-
Go ahead, yes.
-take a minute. As we learned earlier, at an earlier session, the Adventist Church in Old Town is going to be holding a Christmas pageant with the live nativity scene. And in conjunction with that, the Old Tacoma Business Association is planning to have some events at the gazebo in the Old Town area. As part of that, I wondered if maybe we could ask Ms. Matthews for... I'm not sure. I don't recall exactly what kind of decorations we've had in the Old Town area on the street and in the gazebo before.
We've had wreaths, I think, up on the phone poles.
Anyways, I'd just like to find out exactly what we do have so we can see if that... if you think that's going to be adequate. The church is expecting several hundred people a night to be coming through to see their exhibit. And the Old Tacoma Business Association is expecting to attract that crowd down to the gazebo for their performances. So, I'd like to make sure that the decorations are appropriate. And so, if we could find out exactly what we do have and see if maybe we need to supplement those this year with some additional decorations.
And I assume that the timing would be an issue. I don't know when the... You've got the Public Works Director in the audience, and I think that the decorations normally go up around the 1st of December, which is, I think, when the... Isn't that when the event starts, the 1st of December?
I'm not sure the exact date.
Well, I think getting the decorations up by the time it begins would probably be appropriate. And I'm sure we can find out when that is. And the city manager, I'm sure, can take a look at that and make sure that our decorations are not old and tattered-looking.
Yeah, I think this is a good opportunity for the business area, and I'd like to make sure that we do our part to make it a success. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, now let's move along. We have in front of us minutes from two meetings, September 5th and September 11th.
Move it on.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of adopting the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, minutes are adopted. Next item on the agenda is a public comment period. This is the time set aside on the agenda for comments on items that are not on our regular meeting agenda. That would include comments on our one work session item or anything else you'd like to bring before the council. I would ask when you come forward if you'd identify yourself, and also if you could keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Hello, this is Pat Lovelace from 7620 Maple Avenue in Tacoma Park. Just a couple of things I'd like to bring up. I don't know if you people are fully aware of this, but there may have been a nuclear test in North Korea last night. And I was wondering if we could pass a resolution similar to what we did on 9/11, pledging for nonviolence, trying to make our world a better place, and maybe send a copy of that to our government as well as North Korea to try and call a halt to the saber rattling that's going on now, and also to maybe the other countries in the Middle East, to try and call a halt to the proliferation of nuclear weapons and violence around the world. Because as we can see it now in our schools and in our own country, in our inner cities, and in our youth, it's not buying us nothing. It's just creating more and more havoc, and we're drifting closer and closer toward a nuclear war. As a nuclear-free city, I think that would be something we should really work on, pass a resolution to try and see what we can do, and maybe call October 8th a day of remembrance, you know, a day of nonviolence for our city, if we could possibly do that. Second thing I would like to bring to your attention, it came to my attention twice this week. One is, I understand that felons, even after they get out of prison, are not allowed to register to vote. And is there anything we can do to approach our state and our government to try to reverse that archaic barbaric law? Because once they've done their sentences, once they've paid back their debt to society, I think they should be allowed to vote. I mean, you're turning people into animals when people are not allowed to vote. I don't care what the felony was. Once their sentences are done, they should be allowed to vote. The third thing is, I want to invite you people to come down to the Old Town Tacoma Park this Saturday at 10:30, because I'm going to be baptized at the Washington Adventist Church. Yes, I'm going to be baptized. And I'd like to invite anybody from the city council, from the mayor on down, to come and see the event. Yes, I'd like to invite everybody to come on down. But I'd like to see what we can do to pledge October 8th as a day of nonviolence, and also to get felons allowed to vote. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Pat, for that invitation, and certainly congratulations on your decision.
Yes, praise the Lord.
I also, in terms of the other two items, I think that the first one, since we have a nuclear-free committee, I would like to refer that to them for their comments and their contribution. And on the second one, I'm not sure what the status of felons who've served their sentence, and I'd like to ask that we get a response perhaps from the city attorney, not this very minute, but unless you would like to give a response this very minute.
I was about to say, I was very upset that you're not ready to vote. You told us to treat-
Yes, I understand. Thank you, Pat, I appreciate it.
I wanted to say that Pat's entirely right, that it is a feature of Maryland state law that one is not allowed to vote if you're a convicted felon, whether or not you-
Could you move the microphone up a little bit so we can hear you better? Thank you.
Whether or not you serve your time, a convicted felon is not permitted to register to vote. That's true. And I'm not commenting on the policy, but I agree with Pat on this one, but the fact that that's the current state of the law, that's accurate.
And what about in Tacoma Park, in our city elections?
Well, we follow the state law except for the issue of U.S. citizenship, and so that's probably true in our law, too. Would we have the flexibility to change that?
Can we amend it?
We can't change state law, Pat. The question is whether we could change our local law.
At the top of my head, I think we researched that, and I can go back and try to remind us of the answer.
Okay, if you could give us that information, it'd be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council this evening? Okay, seeing no one, we will move on to the next item, which is the city manager's comments.
Just a few items this evening. Relative to the Community Center project, I wanted to let the council know that the elevator cab is in the process of being manufactured, probably on or around November 1st. TRG will be on site to start doing the prep work for the actual cab installation, installing the electrical and the shaft and various other tasks. So, I would imagine in a few weeks, you'll start seeing breakthroughs in the wall again. And as a reminder, the elevator is scheduled to be completely installed by mid-December. So, it is moving along well. In talking to Suzanne Ludlow earlier this afternoon, the gym study is progressing well. The architectural firm is forwarding the various alternatives to their cost estimator, and we're probably on schedule to actually have a presentation of the results of the feasibility study sometime in about mid-November.
Is the intention to speak with the liaison committee first?
Yes, I don't know that that meeting has been scheduled. I think they were hoping to get a little bit further along in the process before they met with the Community Center Liaison Committee, but that meeting was incorporated into their contract.
And that would precede the meeting with the council. I think it would be helpful to have that feedback prior to it coming to the council.
Sure.
Thank you.
On a couple of other matters, I just... The council's certainly aware of this, but for the benefit of anyone watching, it's just a reminder that the WAMADA Board Compact Hearing will take place this week, Wednesday, October 11th, from 6:00 to 10:00 o'clock at Trinity Episcopal Church located at 7005 Piney Branch Road Northwest in Washington, D.C. There is a considerable amount of information on the city's website, and certainly encourage everyone in the community to kind of apprise themselves of the latest going on on this issue, and if they're able to, to testify. Earlier this afternoon, Suzanne Ludlow did email to all of you some suggested comments that each of you may want to make at the compact hearing. We have printed-out copies of what she sent to each of you. I know some of you have already, very quickly, have looked at this and turned it around, but in the event you didn't, there are copies of what Suzanne emailed to each of you at your place at the dais. You have the electronic files, so certainly, you know, feel free to make whatever changes you would like. If you would like some further assistance from Suzanne in terms of finalizing your testimony for Wednesday evening, we would ask if you could get any feedback to her by noon tomorrow so that she has adequate opportunity to turn around the comments for all seven of you in preparation for Wednesday evening. The last item that I have is just to update you on the status of the work at Hefner, the installation of the remote card reader system. As of this evening, that work was substantially complete. There is some minor programming that remains to be done. They need to basically talk to Star Power to get a connection, but I do anticipate that that work should be done sometime in the next day or so. So, hope is just around the corner for those of you who have been going over and opening up the door for the community band. And so, that work should be complete by this week. As soon as it is, the IT Director, Mr. Castillo, and I will be working on getting the card programmed and make contact with those groups that need access to that facility.
Carrie?
I thank you, and I noticed tonight, when we were up at Hefner Park, that the card reader is there and appears to have power, so it looks like we're all ready to go.
Yeah, there's just one minor connection. I guess we get some of our service through the data lines by Star Power, and apparently there's just something that Mr. Castillo still needs to work out with them, but that should be done very quickly.
Yeah, and I know that we still have some problems whereby the cards are not opening the doors, or the doors are not opening at the proper times. And so, I just wonder if there's any more training that's scheduled, or still some bugs to be worked out in the process.
I believe there is still some work going on if there's specific doors at specific times. Councilmember Stevens said you're particularly concerned about. If you could share that with me, and I can follow up on those issues. I know there's still a few issues to work out. I thought that most of them had been resolved. So, perhaps we could talk at the break and...
Okay, and one of the things I think would be helpful is to make sure that the staff does have a backup way of unlocking the doors, which doesn't always seem to be the case.
I'll check with the rec staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it, unless there's any other further questions.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda is the... And I assume that's why the Public Works Director is here, introduction of our new city arborist.
It's my great pleasure to introduce Todd Moulton to you guys this evening. We're thrilled that Todd is available and accepted the position. He started with the city on September 25th, so he's had a couple opportunities to get the real feel of the arborist duties, and also had an opportunity to network in Virginia Beach on the city's behalf at the ISA Annual Conference. So, to say he's hit the ground running is probably an understatement. I won't go into details of his background. Suffice it to say that Todd comes to us with both the technical knowledge for tree analysis, tree care, as well as the bigger picture, and I think that's really the jewel of his background, understanding the overall management issues, the overall integration of forested areas and urban areas, and how best to care for that. So, we're pleased to have him with us, and feel free to say whatever else you need to do, and I'll just sit back down and listen.
I agree with Brett that his leading comment that people of Tacoma Park love their trees, and I'm very glad to be at a place where I'm doing what most of the people want rather than the other way around. I think I'll enjoy being asked to preserve trees rather than allow them to be gutted down so something else can be done on the land. I'm glad to be here.
Well, we're very glad to have you, and I think now that you've accepted the job and can't change your mind, we can... Probably, you won't be surprised to hear that, with the possible exception of the city manager, the arborist job may be the most... What's the word? Should I say? I was going to say fulfilling. Fulfilling and possibly contentious, maybe? Not on your part, but in terms of the issues that you have to deal with in the city. There are many situations where you have many people who feel very strongly about a tree situation, but they don't feel in the same direction. So, I think having good diplomatic skills as well as the ability to explain things to people and explain rationales and work with people is a very important part of your job. So, I wish you good luck, and we certainly will be looking forward to working with you in the future.
I am glad to be here. Thank you.
Let me just add that I understand that you've expressed some happiness at working back on this side of the river again, and we're glad to have you back on this side.
I was a blue boy in a red state for six years. I'm glad to be back over here, yes.
Well, they don't get much bluer than here.
Well, I'd like to welcome you as well. I know that I've received several comments from neighbors who are excited that there's a new arborist coming, and they have lots of questions and different things they want assistance with, including myself. One of my tree branches dropped onto my young neighbor's car two weeks ago. So, I'll be requiring your services as well to evaluate my tree.
You've got my number.
All right, well, welcome. We're very happy that you're here.
Thank you.
Well, we appreciate your coming, and we're very glad to have you here. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now moving to our regular meeting agenda, and the first is a follow-up resolution from our resolution last week. I think at... Do you want to sort of give the reason that we're here with this particular resolution, Sue?
Oh, thank you. I'd be happy to. Briefly, the last... These are both, of course, having to do with the proposed Tacoma Metro development that will be heard as the city manager explained Wednesday night in front of the WAMADA Board. And the resolution that you all passed unanimously last week was directed specifically to the WAMADA Board. This new resolution is very similar, but the audience, the direction is toward the Federal Transit Administration, which will have the ultimate authority to approve or not approve whatever WAMADA's Board decides to do. And so, this resolution is an attempt to use the criteria under the law that FTA will be using to review the project and to show why this council feels that FTA should be monitoring this very closely for the many problems that we know exist with the project.
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank Sue and staff for doing this. I think it's actually the best solution. As I expressed last week, my concern that we did not have a strong enough statement of what the council was resolving, especially for our main audience, who's Brian Glenn at FTA. This really addresses that, and I feel comfortable going forward with a separate second resolution instead of amending last week's. So, thank you for your work on this over the last week, and thanks go to Suzanne as well.
Are there... Are you...
Oh, I'd like to move it.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any... Go ahead, Bruce.
And if I can make two friendly amendments that are mostly format, not substance, in Items 11 and 12, under the resolve clause, page three, bottom of page three.
There's actually two resolve. Okay, bottom of page three, 11 and 12.
Number 11 starts out, "Provide the same amount," and the formatting above was "WAMADA SHOULD." This one doesn't say who should provide the same amount, so I think it should be "WAMADA SHOULD." And same thing with number 12, it just says, "Preserve the green buffer." And I think it should be... WAMADA should be directed to do those.
So, you're just... You're proposing to add the...
WAMADA SHOULD at the beginning of 11 and 12.
With that...
Yeah.
Okay. Let's... Since I consider that to be a sort of an editing change, then we can just assume that the intention was to move it with that in there.
So, at 11, are you saying that it should begin with "That WAMADA SHOULD"?
No. Because...
So, that it meets all the following criteria.
And then the other ones begin either "WAMADA SHOULD" or...
"WAMADA MUST," or...
Or such-and-such should be...
Okay, I understand.
Because there's... I think what Bruce is saying is that there's no subject to the sentences in 11 and 12.
Naked and complete sentence. That sounds good.
And I... As I said, that's...
I hate to admit, I was an English professor once. Oh, well.
After you've done 12 of them, you get tired of writing "WAMADA SHOULD." Are there any other questions, comments on the resolution? Are there any public comments on this resolution? And I would just reiterate what Sue said, that we have a public hearing before WAMADA on Wednesday, to which it's important that everyone attend. But we also... The ultimate audience beyond that is FTA, Federal Transit Administration, because they have to approve the decision that WAMADA makes concerning the transit facilities.
If I could add just one thing, please, about everyone's input. In addition to coming, or instead of coming, with oral testimony, which we really encourage for October 11th, there's also the option of submitting written statements, and those are due in at the latest at 5:00 p.m., October 25th. And that's to be sent to the Secretary of WAMADA, who is Ms. Deborah Johnson. All of this information is on the city's website as well as WAMADA's website. The one thing I especially want to say is that email comments are also an option up until October 25th. There was a mistake for the email address in the Tacoma Voice October issue. It's embedded in a letter to the editor. And so, if anybody has been relying on that email address, I want to just say for the public what the correct one is. And again, that is on the city's website as well as on WAMADA's own website.
Thank you for letting us know that. I appreciate it. And if you can't make the hearing, certainly written comments would be very useful. Go ahead, Joy.
I know we're awaiting information from an appraiser. Can you tell us about the prospects of that? I was hoping we'd have at least something by today, but it looks like we might not.
No, it's more likely we'll have it by close of business tomorrow, or at the very latest Wednesday morning. As soon as I get information, I will email that out to the council members, so you should check your email. And of course, the city staff will be including the analysis that goes with that fact in the legal brief, and I'm sure others of you might want to argue from it. And then, in addition, we'll be getting a much more thorough written appraisal from the appraiser before the 25th, so we'll be using that information in a more complete way in the written submissions.
Thank you.
And it's also probably worth noting that in addition to the testimony that will be given verbally, we intend to submit to WAMADA a great deal of information in writing, which will also support the kinds of discussions that we plan to have with the WAMADA Board.
WAMADA, by the way, will be doing a transcript of the full hearing, so that whatever people say, either orally or in writing, will be part of the record.
Okay, good. And if there are no council comments and no public comments, I don't see any. This is a resolution, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the resolution passes unanimously. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
And thank you, Joy. The next item is a single-reading ordinance awarding a contract for the community legacy project funding. We had a discussion of this last week.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Last week, we discussed the community legacy award to the city, which the state has allowed us to ask for a change so that 2,000... I'm sorry, 215,000 of it would be awarded as a grant, and approximately 75,000 would be awarded as a loan, a no-interest 10-year loan, to be... I'm sorry, to be paid back over 10 years. I believe August, July 31st, the council directed staff to look at ways that that funding could be used to complete the Carroll Avenue Stuarts Gate project. Currently, Laurel Avenue is completed, the residential section of Carroll is completed. However, the commercial section has not been implemented. And we put the project out to bid, we received four bids on the project, which we discussed with the council last week, and at that time, we provided three options. And the first option was to stay entirely within the grant. The second option was to stay within the grant... I'm sorry, just to do all of the priorities that would be paid for within the grant, but then to add the next priority down on the priority list that was presented to the council back in July of 2004. And then the third option was to implement all of that and then the rest of the plan, which was only two other items within the plan. At that time, the amount discussed was approximately 7,000. Did we discover an error in the spreadsheet? It's 81,000 is the difference between Option 1 and Option 3. The city manager mentioned that there may be funds available due to differences between estimation... Estimated income and... City estimated income and actual income. And at that time, council did not make a decision between the three options. However, we did discuss that it is desirable to have an ordinance passed right now contingent upon approval from the state, given the season and given the need by the state that the money be drawn down sooner, this fall, I believe in November. So, we did prepare an ordinance, and we selected one of the contractors as being the most responsive, and prepared an ordinance. The city manager was able to identify funding for the completion, and that is in the ordinance. And so, it's up to you to discuss.
Do you want to elaborate any barb on the source of the funding and why you are convinced that it wouldn't be detrimental to the...
Sure. As Ms. Blanchard sort of alluded to, what I did in conjunction with the finance director is look at the unaudited results for FY06. Obviously, it's too early in FY07 to sort of see where we'll end up the year. But what she and I did was basically go back and review what we had projected in terms of revenues for the year ending June 30th, 2006, as well as expenditures. Based on the unaudited results, I feel very comfortable saying that expenditures will either come in where we project or possibly slightly under, based on where we're at with the audit. In terms of revenues, there were a number of areas where, quite frankly, revenues are going to come in much higher than we had thought when we first prepared the budget. As we had talked about last week, income taxes in particular are always very difficult to project. There's usually some things that actually happen after the fiscal year that get accrued back, and that happened again this year. So, we're seeing healthier-than-anticipated receipts from income taxes, as well as inspection fees and recreation user charges. So I feel very comfortable, should the council wish to move forward with doing option three, which is sort of the full-blown Carroll Avenue Streetscape project, if you will, that there are sufficient funds in the general fund to do that, and that allocating that funding will not be in any way financially detrimental to the city. If the council does wish to do that, kind of procedurally, what would need to occur is we'll need to formalize that intent in a budget amendment. There is a budget amendment before you this evening for first reading. It does not reflect this, this transfer, if you will, that will need to occur pending further direction from the council. If you decide to award the contract as presented to you this evening, what you'll see is I will amend that budget amendment on second reading, so that we can basically tie up all the loose ends.
Is there any, I have an additional question. Are there any other questions relating to the funding for this project, for the, to the city manager? Another question, I noticed that your recommendation is to go with the second highest, the second lowest bidder in terms of, and you noted that?
Right.
In your estimation, which is well within our city ordinance, that you believe that that is the lowest responsible bidder. Could you elaborate a little bit?
Yes. After calling our references, it turns out that the lowest, or the lowest amount, the bidder with the lowest amount is actually a contractor, and he subs out all of the work, which means that we would be going with the lowest bidder, who also received the lowest bids, and would then be working through the contract with the middleman. And if there are no problems on the job and they're able to work through, it shouldn't be a big issue. But we did use the same contractor for a past contract, and after speaking with the person who managed that contract, he felt that if there was an option to go with someone who was not subbing out the work, that we would have more control over the job site.
Is there?
Just a follow-up question on that particular point. Is it only about control, or is it only about, is it also about kind of their ability to get the subs in on the timeframe that we're talking about?
We are, we do have a very tight timeframe. We have a nine-week timeframe, 45 days. And that's, if you're, depending on how many subs they're using, that could be very difficult. And they've proposed phasing it in four pieces, so that's, divide that by four, because you're coming in for each section.
And it's not, in the overall scheme of things, it's not a huge amount of money. It's what, less than, it's between $6,000 and $7,000 out of a?
Correct.
230-something thousand-dollar contract. And so it would seem that if there's concerns, and I agree with you, that seems like a valid concern, concerns about this being completed in a timely way, that that would be a good reason not to necessarily go with the lowest bidder. Yes, Bruce?
I just want to back up a minute. I know that last week, both council member Austin Lane and I expressed our support for option one. And before I give my support to the proposal for option three, I need you to go through a little bit more information.
Sure.
The, as I looked at the pieces last week, I was a little bit confused about the bump out close to the driveway into the Carsova property that was, I think, labeled as one of the options that was going to come in under either option two or three. And it was a little unclear to me, the break that would occur if we went with option one, how much of that stretch from the driveway to Westmoreland would get done under option one, and what gets added in under options two or three, to get a sense of how that all works together.
Right.
Because I guess my sense, and maybe the neighborhood's sense, when they had the presentation on it, was that that whole stretch was being taken care of as part of the work being done concerning the Westmoreland-Carroll intersection.
The area, the work to tighten, we would call it tightening up the intersection at Carroll Avenue. That's all included in option two, with the exception of the bump out in front of the church, which is part, which was considered an alternate bid option, so that was part of option three. However, the bump out in front of the SunTrust Video American and Summer Delights is part of option two. The bump out that protects the parking, that's in front of, I believe it's called Tacoma Underground, the 7,000 Carroll Avenue, and right in front of the parking, there's several parking spots right there, so the bump out that would protect that is also part of option two, and not option one.
Right. But what I want to understand is the relationship of any of the work being done in that, call it continuous curb, from the driveway at SunTrust?
Right.
On down to Westmoreland.
Okay.
Because there are modifications to the Westmoreland intersection.
Right.
And how does that relate to what's going on in terms of the removal of parking, the handicap parking?
There's no removal of any parking. All of the bump out that occurs at the Carroll Avenue intersection is in a no-parking zone. Now, people stop there and park all the time there, but they're not really allowed to. They're basically parking in the center of an intersection. And the property owner has expressed strong support for this, because it's very good for business to have a much wider sidewalk in front of your businesses.
Okay, I'll try this, I'll try this a different way.
But, hang on, and I'll get to where you're going. Westmore, the Westmoreland Avenue bump out is also part of a no-parking area that begins right at the end of the parking, and I believe it's in front of the building next to Shampoo, is actually parking. And then, once you get to the Shampoo building, that's a no-parking area. And so that's where the bump out would begin again.
Okay, so?
Which part is it?
So, if we went with option one, that modification that you just described would happen at that end of that run of curb, and if we went with option two, it would add the other piece back by SunTrust?
Right.
And Summer Delight.
Right. And option?
And they're not necessarily linked, even though they're in the same run of curb. And is there any impact on the efficacy of the change to Westmoreland and Carroll from that change in option two back up at SunTrust?
The way we like to think of traffic coming is that it all works together, and that you're creating a consistent environment for the driver, where they have less width to do whatever they want and pass people, less, shorter sight distances, so that they slow down and they're more careful, and lots of tall trees and so forth, or poles or whatever, so that they see a lot of vertical elements that makes them slow down. So it all works together. In that way, it would decrease your efficacy if you didn't do all of it. However, the Westmoreland section was a priority, too, that whole intersection. The only part of that which is not included in option one is the bid option, which is the narrowing, it's a curb extension at the other side of the crosswalk next to Westmoreland. That's an option three.
There is an option three?
That's an option three. That's only an option three, because that was a bid option. It's a very small bump out, but it does.
Okay. And then, could you, I was privy to an email exchange that you had?
Right.
In answering some questions that somebody had about the process, if you could just kind of go through a couple of those points, just to kind of explain?
Sure.
For maybe anybody else who might have been under some misapprehension that was expressed in that.
Well, the Carroll Avenue project obviously began, I've been working on the Carroll Avenue project, it's basically been my whole life for two and three-quarters of a year. Not my whole life, fortunately, but it's, I spent a lot of time here working on it. It actually started before I came here. Dan Burden came, and I came from my other job and walked around with him. And many of these features are things that he talked about, and he had people stand out in the street and demonstrate. From there, the city did designate funding for the project, and at that time, there was a very short timeframe on it. So we had a series, which is when I came on board. We had a series of very short workshops. There had been a consultant, an engineering firm had been hired to work with the city on the design, and they held workshops with the community, they held workshops in the morning with the business community, workshops in the evening for both the business community and the rest of the community. They also went, and I went, to many different community organizations to show them what had been developed. Everything was put up on the web. People were encouraged to send in responses and thoughts and ideas, as well as to mark up the plans in the, not just the plans, but also just the original street, and say, you know, what they thought about it, what was wrong with it, what was good about it. Once that had been completed, the concepts were presented to the council, and then, once a final, actually, I believe we presented to you, we presented the final concept, and then through the approval process, we presented those to you, and that included the state, Historic Preservation Commission, Sentiment and Erosion Control, though I don't believe we bothered you with that one. And there were several other permits that we went through, but during that process, we did present to the council several times, as well as different community groups that were very interested in the plan and what had happened with it. And actually, those community members were very instrumental in funding, in that they wrote letters, and they actually kept after many agencies when, both when we were in the construction process, but also later when we still had an unfinished piece left to be finished.
That's helpful, just because I think, I know that, it's obvious that some other people lost sight of what happened a long period of time ago.
It's two years ago.
Couple of years ago, and I know it's easy for us to lose sight of that in the volume of things that come before us, and some of those things kind of recede in memory. So it's helpful to be reminded about that process. Thanks.
If it's okay, with the rest of the council, I'd like to go ahead and move this.
Second.
Okay.
And this, I want to commend the city manager and staff for bringing to us a creative use of previously found funds and turning it into a grant, hopefully, that the state will approve. I'm really thrilled that we are going to see this project through, and especially completing it all in one fell swoop, instead of trying to go piecemeal. So, thank you, and I want you to let us know if there's anything we can do to help make things come out right.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I, again, just reiterate what I said last week. I think the plan is excellent. I really think it demonstrates the best of what we, of what we can do, and when the professional staff works with developing a plan, but works very closely with the community. And I think together, in collaboration, the plan is one of the best plans that I've seen the city do. And I really thank the staff and the community members for working together and bringing it to this point. I was really pleased to see the way the Westmoreland intersection came out. It really looks workable, it looks like it addresses the issues that I know the seniors and the disabled have in using the sidewalks in that area. Again, I just thank you for your effort, and I fully support this. Excuse me, if I may say, just one other thing. I think it's, I think it also is important for this council, when we do get a good plan that does have so much involvement from the community, that we go ahead and implement it to its fullest. Thank you.
I'm going to support option three, even though it's more expensive. A couple of things I wanted to point out. I think going to option three gets us some assistance in the area in front of Savory, which I think right now is kind of a dangerous area, because the driveway apron is so wide, and people actually park across the driveway and make all kinds of funny U-turns, so that they can park into the driveway, and it's just one of the more troublesome spots. But I also wanted to point out another dangerous area, where I've almost been hit a couple times, and that is at the intersection where Carroll and Laurel connect up, as Carroll goes around the corner, because people don't stop, even if there's a red light, sometimes they don't stop. I've seen the Womata police drive through there on a red light, fast. I about got hit by a FedEx semi truck this last month, and the only way I got the guy to stop rolling forward was to whap the front of his car a couple of times with a hard notebook that I happened to be carrying. I probably should have run instead of stopped to whap his, whap his thing, which reaction.
An aggressive pedestrian.
Yeah, well, it's huge. But I want to point out that it's possible that because this is going to stop traffic and give people a sense of a change and a stop in the flow, that it might cause some spillover traffic into the neighborhood as people try to cut through into areas where they perceive then they can go around without stopping. I think it's probably worth the risk of the trade-off, but I just wanted to say that that's a potential issue. I don't know if there's anything we can do about it to help protect that or keep that in mind. And the last thing that I want to say is, well, I think the whole plan is great. Let's do it in a way so that we don't have to redo anything later. Don't want to redo any fences, or any landscaping, or any accessways, or anything like that. I don't know what the key is to that, but I'm sure you do, and you'll make it happen.
It's all on public property.
It's all on public property. Excellent. Okay.
Any other comments? I just wanted to thank you for the work that you did on this, and particularly appreciate the work you did with the community. I would agree with my colleagues that this is a well-put-together plan. I wanted to make a couple of other brief points. One is that I think this is a good investment of city money. Sometimes we get suggestions for things to do that would be good uses, but this is actually an investment. I think it's an investment both in the appearance of our infrastructure, as well as in economic development. This is the kind of thing that would make people more willing to go to Old Town and to walk around in front of the shops. The other point that I wanted to make is the same point I made last week, which is that even though it is requiring us to put in some of our own funds, I think that it is more efficient to get all of the work done at one time. If we were to go just with what we could afford based on the grant funds, and then come back and try and do the rest of it later, we would undoubtedly end up paying more for the second piece than we would if we do it all at once. And so even though there is, this does require some city funds, I look at those as an investment in both economic development and the appearance of our infrastructure, and I think that this is probably the best and most efficient way to get the work done, so I do also support option three. This ordinance has been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment on the ordinance?
Yes, I've got one comment I'd like to ask the city of, this is Mr. Pat Lovellus again, 7620 Maple Avenue.
Yes.
Yeah, when you redo the sidewalks down here, a lot of times, you know, those bricks don't always stay level. You know, when I go down there, if I'm down there with a friend or something, my cane has a tendency to get caught in joints between the bricks. And also, you know, like after a frost or something like that, some of those bricks have a tendency to lift up, and in the past, and over the years, I've noticed in some places, you know, some of the bricks are actually missing, whether kids pick them up and chuck them or what, I have no idea. But would it be possible to make them on a level, make them on a permanently level so that they don't heave, and so that they can't be picked out or whatever? And also to be aware of when there's ice around, is it possible to like to have a textured surface on them bricks, so that we don't slip or feel funny on the foot when we can't walk right? I'm just worried about that. You know, I was wondering if they could make that, so that we don't get our canes caught in them things. I'm sure alley people have that problem, too.
Sure.
So, it'd be nice to address that.
Thank you, Pat. Are we taking steps to try and deal with the surface?
Um, we, I did identify several locations that have either sinking bricks or
Missing bricks.
Missing deteriorated bricks and we will address those when we're implementing this project.
Yeah, like if they could grow them in so they can't be removed.
We do encourage people though to contact Public Works anytime there is a missing brick and that would probably be a more efficient and faster way of fixing, fixing the sidewalk in Old Town because it is set in sand and we don't actually have the funds to replace all of the surface, probably bricks will continue to become dislodged from time to time.
But can we keep an eye on it to make sure that the surface is not becoming too uneven? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Bruce Moyer, 6907 Westmoreland Avenue and president of WACO, the Westmoreland Area Community Organization. We want to also speak in support of option three and particularly want to first of all extend our thanks to you, the members of the council, for your commitment and recognition of the need to improve, first of all, that Carroll-Westmoreland intersection. And when the funds became available that back in July as a part of the legacy grant as opposed to the loan money that you devoted priority to making that happen. As we all know, that's one of the most dangerous intersections in town and while we all recognize that the improvements are not a silver bullet to assure that no accidents never occur, given the topography of that intersection, nonetheless, the kinds of improvements that you have in mind in improving the sightlines, in constraining the lane of traffic are certainly ready improvements that will be a benefit to both pedestrians and to motorists. Secondly, the overall plan that you've put together is one that as all you already have acknowledged is one that's due to a lot of staff work and that should be highly complimented for their hard work, their diligence, their creativity over the course of the last two years in working with the neighborhood. At our last meeting in September, Sarah Danes came to talk with us about the numbers of improvements that are embodied in this plan, both in terms of bump outs, but also in terms of the tree canopy. And it does represent a real boon to and benefit to not only the neighborhood, but the city at large. This is truly a win-win for Old Town and for neighborhoods around Old Town as well as the city at large. So we thank you for your commitment, for the staff work and for your, as you said, Mayor Porter, the investment that this represents. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this ordinance? All right, seeing no one, are there any additional council comments? Since this is a single reading ordinance, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Rossin Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Barry.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons.
Aye.
Councilmember Wade.
The ordinance passes and thank you for all of your work and thank you for the folks who worked with you on it. We do appreciate that. The next item on the agenda is a resolution opposing the confinement of egg-laying hens. Bruce, do you want to speak to this?
Yes, I'd like to introduce it.
Somebody want to second it?
Second.
All right.
And say that I believe there are a couple of people here tonight who have taken great interest in this and have provided information and are going to speak to this. Let me just point out that if you looked at the material that was supplied as backup, you can see that essentially there is no designation for the conditions under which egg-laying hens live that provides all of the, what would seem to be necessary conditions to kind of have a decent life while they're providing those eggs, no matter what designation you come up with. Every one of them is lacking and the basic one that's provided, the, let me get the terminology right, the United Egg Producers Certification, which you would think would be, would mean something, only says that each hen should currently have 61 square inches. And when you think about the size of this piece of paper, eight and a half by 11, that's half again more than one hen gets. So I guess about that much is what one hen gets to lay eggs. And they're going to magnanimously increase that from 61 to 67 square inches by 2008. It just doesn't cut it. So this will speak to that condition. The city doesn't actually buy eggs, so we can't restrict our own purchases, but I think it's a good chance for education to our residents and to the businesses in town and all of us who do buy eggs to pay attention to this, to try and do something to better the lives of the chickens and maybe give us some better eggs in the process and be a little bit more humane about the whole process.
I just want to add that it was a real education for me to get these materials on the conditions under which chickens are kept for the purposes of laying eggs. It's not something that I had known a great deal about and it's really kind of revolting when you hear about the conditions under which they live. My mother, when she was a child, lived in the country. She didn't live on a farm, but she kept chickens and they had a chicken coop and a chicken yard and, you know, the chickens scratched around in the yard in front of the chicken coop. And I guess I had always assumed that that's what still happened, but that's obviously not the case. And I think anyone who is concerned about the well-being of animals and anyone who's concerned about the well-being of the food that they eat ought to be concerned about something like this and so I'm very supportive of this. I also wanted to let people know in case they're not sure where to buy eggs, I'm not sure what the proper term is, eggs from free-range chickens. I noticed last week when I was at the co-op that they have a lot of information on the source of their eggs. Tacoma Park Silver Spring Co-op has a lot of information posted on the source of their eggs and many of them appear to be from non-caged, I don't know what the proper term is, but chickens.
We'll hear the proper term.
And so, and so if people are concerned about, well, that sounds all very well, but where'd you get those eggs? There's an option that's right in town is the co-op. Any other comments? Are there any public comments on this?
Yes, one second. As far as educating, this is Mr. Lovelace again.
Yes.
As far as educating ourselves on the welfare of the chickens and stuff, I think that's great. I think we should also educate ourselves on the safety of our food. We also got to realize that the recent E. coli epidemic as a result of the spinach has now progressed onto lettuce and is also they're having botulism problems with carrot juice. So we got to realize what are we doing to our food chain, the way we are treating our animals and the way we are dumping our waste into our irrigation systems? We got to really address the big picture. The chickens are just scratching the surface, so to speak. But we really got to really address the big issue. It's how safe do we want to keep our food and how we should educate ourselves and educate our city on how to keep and what leads up to these bizarre, I should say, incidents concerning our food. We have had two or three people die already of E. coli. We don't need any more in our country. We need to do everything we can to make our food safer for the animals, to give us our food and for the people who eat our food. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Williams. My name is Paul Shapiro and I'm a resident of Little Eastern. I've been living in Tacoma Park for the last five years, three of them on Poplar and the last two on Little Eastern. And I wanted to thank the mayor for her support of this resolution. Not only am I a Tacoma Park resident, but I also am an employee of the Humane Society of the United States, which 13% of all Montgomery County residents are members of. And as the nation's largest animal welfare organization, one of our top priorities is improving the lives of animals who are raised for food. And when it comes to the lives of farm animals, it really doesn't get any worse than that of egg-laying hens. These animals are confined, as Bruce said, in cages that are so small they're unable even to spread their wings. Their lives are filled with frustration and daily misery, including on three major factory farms here in Maryland that confine millions of these birds in ways that prevent them even from moving for over a year before they end up going to slaughter. It truly is unconscionable and passing this resolution would send a strong message to the factory farming egg industry that it needs to start improving its notoriously poor record on animal welfare. Not only is the egg industry abusing these animals, it is also misleading consumers. The Better Business Bureau ruled that the United Egg Producers, the main trade association for the industry, was engaging in misleading advertising in both 2003 and 2004. In 2005, the Federal Trade Commission ended up working out a deal with the United Egg Producers where they would pull the most egregious of these examples where the trade association was trying to mislead the public about the welfare of the animals who it was confining. Just last month, the United Egg Producers agreed to pay a $100,000 fine to 16 state attorney generals, including the DC AG, to settle those AG's claims that it was misleading the public about the welfare of these factory-farmed animals. The egg industry is getting away with cruelty to animals. For too long, it's been getting away with consumer fraud and passing this resolution would go a great ways toward sending a message that it needs to start doing better. So thank you very much for bringing the resolution and I think there might be some other folks in the audience who have some comments about it.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Erica Meyer and I am a very proud resident of Tacoma Park and I also work in Tacoma Park at the Tacoma Business Center. And I want to thank the council very much for introducing this resolution. As was previously mentioned, there are hundreds of thousands of birds in Maryland alone who are spending their entire lives in wire cages so small they can barely even move. And there's documentation of the suffering on these farms on many websites that you can visit, including eggindustry.com. You can see how these birds are spending their lives. And not only have I seen how these birds have spent their lives, but I spent four years as an animal control officer in Washington DC enforcing the animal protection laws and rescuing injured and stray, injured and stray and unwanted animals on the streets of DC. And I can say that as being someone involved in the animal protection movement in the nation's capital, I know that if these, if dogs and cats were treated as egg-laying hens confined in cages are treated, it would definitely be considered animal cruelty. And by Tacoma Park taking a stand and being one of the leaders in this area by condemning this practice of confining hens in cages and making a stand against animal abuse, that we can actually in Tacoma Park be a leader in the nation on this and hopefully bring about change elsewhere to help these animals. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Good evening. My name's Cory Smith. I'm a longtime resident of Tacoma Park. I grew up in Silver Spring and I defected here as soon as I could legally. And I'm sitting here tonight in this room that to me feels very cold and very uncomfortable, but I'm thinking as I walk up to the stand here that, you know, pales in comparison to the life of a hen who lives in a battery cage and those discomforts and frustrations that really define nature and violate every animal cruelty law on the books. I also actually worked with Erica in Washington DC. I was an animal control officer and spent my days protecting animals and I'm very proud to be here tonight as Tacoma Park resident and to live in a city that takes a holistic approach to the community. So thank you very much for introducing this resolution.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name's Erin Williams and I live actually in Silver Spring, but I'm going to be moving to Tacoma Park in a couple of months. So hopefully, if you could take that into account. But I did want to commend you all for your foresight and leadership in addressing this very important issue that really affects millions of birds, hundreds of millions of birds across the country. And by taking a strong stance on this, as Mr. Shapiro mentioned, you will be sending a very strong message to the factory farming egg community that, you know, these sorts of abuses are not to be tolerated. As you've heard, egg-laying hens confined in battery cages cannot spread their wings. They cannot even walk, they cannot perch or dust bathe or engage in many of their very important natural behaviors. The one other thing that I'd like to add is that as someone who grew up on a family farm where we had egg-laying hens, we never would have considered placing them inside these battery cages where they cannot walk, where they cannot spread their wings. They are still all allowed, you know, free access to, of course, food and water and also are able to go outside and have, you know, areas where they're kept inside, you know, at night. And I think like many family farmers right now, they would never have ever considered doing something like that to the birds. So thanks again very much for your consideration of this matter.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Steve Russell. I'm a resident of Tacoma Park for several years. I live over on Roanoke. I read the resolution and I agree with it 100%. I do a little bit of reading about this matter in my spare time and reading a bunch of studies, which surprised me that chickens may not be as dumb as we think they are. They may even be smarter than some of our dogs and I wouldn't want any dog that I ever owned to spend their entire life stuffed into a box. I don't know if anybody here is old enough to remember the phone booth stuffing craze college kids got into in the late 60s and early 70s. If I said that's the life of an egg-laying chicken, it would sound like an exaggeration, but it wouldn't be. They can't stand up straight, they can't move at all, like they're stuffed in a phone booth for their entire lives. This gentleman over here mentioned the health concerns about E. coli. E. coli comes from waste. I've seen some films on the internet of these facilities and since they're packed in so tight, their waste has to go someplace and often what happens is these animals end up spending their entire lives in this waste. And I'm sure we all read articles about E. coli being dumped into our waterways in Maryland and causing various health problems and destruction to the environment that we as Maryland residents really love. You know, there are places that tourists can't go to because of these things. It never used to be like that. These bizarre conditions which the resolution addresses have come about in the last few decades just to squeeze more nickels out of already high profits. And the profits aren't really staying in Maryland, they're going to large corporations that sort of share crop out these facilities. So it's bad for almost anybody and I appreciate very much that this resolution is informed and it's being offered here in Tacoma Park.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dan Phillips. Unlike some of the people who've spoken, I've only lived in Tacoma Park for about a year. It's a nice town though, I'm glad I moved. One of the things that attracted me to Tacoma Park though was just kind of the progressive nature of the city. And I'm just very pleased that you, Mr. Williams, introduced this and with the support from the mayor. This is the sort of reason that I moved to Tacoma Park and I do appreciate that. I don't think I need to add to what others have said about the, just the horrible condition in which these, the hens in battery cages are kept. It truly is horrible. I would just encourage you to support this resolution, just kind of is a moral humane thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Gavert Matheny. I've lived in Tacoma Park for four years and like the mayor, I, up until a few years ago, was under the impression that laying hens were kept on free ranges and in conditions that we were told about in storybooks. I was surprised to find out a couple of years ago that most laying hens are kept in these appalling conditions. So now as a consumer, I buy only free range eggs and I'm heartened that this resolution could help other consumers to find out the truth about where their eggs come from so that they could be more educated in making humane choices, whether in Tacoma Park or elsewhere. And I'm also impressed that this resolution could be the first of its kind in the country to send a strong signal to industry and hopefully improve conditions nationally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
For the record, I'm Penny Jones Knappier.
I want to turn the mic down a little bit.
I'm sorry.
Because you won't have to speak so loudly. Because you won't have to speak so loudly.
Hi, my name is Penny Jones-Nappier. I want to clarify, I come before you as a citizen, not as part of the business association tonight. And I'm really impressed that you are putting forth this resolution. I'm going to tell you just briefly a story. My grandmother was a chicken farmer in Texas, and she supplied eggs to a town of about 800 people in a rural Texas area. And what we have with our egg-laying today and what we did when I was growing up and the chickens roamed and we would go and gather eggs and candle them to get them ready for market is a very different, different state of affairs. This comes down to a matter of compassion, really. And I live in this community because by and far we are a compassionate community. We have humanitarian ideals, we're educated. So, I would fully endorse and recommend that you pass this resolution. I think it's a wonderful, wonderful thing to do. And you all are educated about the horrors of what happens with factory farming and egg-laying hens. No one is saying that people shouldn't eat eggs, we're just saying that there's a compassionate way to raise the animals that give us these wonderful gifts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, if not, is there any comments or questions from the council? If not, we-
Just we can take up this fowl business.
I was waiting, hoping we would get through this without someone saying that. All right.
Larry Rubin.
That's right, the shades of Larry Rubin. The resolution is before the council. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the resolution passes unanimously. I had a thought in terms of something that we might be able to do with the resolution. As far as I know, there's only one large supermarket within the city boundaries. Maybe we could send a copy of this resolution to them and ask that they provide, whatever the appropriate term is, cage-free, cruelty-free eggs as an option to people. I haven't seen them there. It's a safe way down in Tacoma-Lanley area. But I think it might be something that they might be willing to do. I have gotten to know the night manager, whatever his title is, and he has attempted in a number of instances to try and be responsive to people's requests, so that might be something that we might be able to get them to do. And then if they sell, they might be willing to keep them on, and that might be a good, both a good alternative for people who are concerned and maybe also instructive to the supermarket industry. So, maybe that's something else I would be willing to, or either Councilmember Williams or I could put together a letter and send it on. Maybe we could get Councilmember Barry, since it's his ward, to help us out maybe by speaking to the folks there. I don't think it's the, I'm not talking about sending it to the national chain headquarters, I'm talking about sending it to the manager of that particular store who understands makes those kinds of decisions.
Just to amplify your idea there, I think that there are convenience stores and other places that probably sell eggs in our city limits. On New Hampshire, there's one, there's TJ's Market at the Junction, and on Maple Avenue, I don't know if they sell eggs, but there are quite a number of small markets that I think should know that we've passed this as a city, and we would love for them to follow suit if they-
I'm sure folks in our economic development office know what food stores we have, and we could put together a list and send them that.
One brief comment about what's going on in the District of Columbia on this. Councilman Jim Graham has introduced a bill that would require the district's grocers to notify consumers which eggs do indeed come from birds who are confined in these battery cages, because oftentimes, consumers have no idea. Battery cage eggs can be labeled as farm-fresh, all-natural, and a whole host of other misleading claims. And so, Councilman Graham's bill, hopefully, will get a hearing sometime soon, but it is one other thing just to keep the council apprised of what's going on in this, in the region.
Well, thank you for that information. Unlike the District of Columbia, we don't have authority over how food products are sold in Tacoma Park, but I think we can maybe achieve some of the same ends just by information and letting people know that there is some interest.
Mayor Porter, I wonder if it might not be appropriate, since we are the first, I guess, the first jurisdiction in the country to pass such an ordinance, if we don't, I think we should issue a press release announcing what we've done and the reasons behind it.
We can-
Yeah, our intention in talking to Councilmember Williams when he first brought this up was to issue a press release, do a follow-up article in the newsletter, and put some information on the website as well.
Great, thank you.
We might even get a future potential county council member interested.
Sorry, what?
Okay, speak, speak.
So, we might even get a future potential county council member interested in taking it to county.
That's what we were just discussing.
We're talking about this.
Trying to hatch an idea down there? Never mind.
All right, we can move now on to the next item. The next item is a resolution approving the community development block, oh, excuse me, block grant projects that we discussed last week. I think we've, with staff intending to be here, are you going to cut it out?
No, actually, Sarah is not here this evening. I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions that the council has. This was discussed last Tuesday during the work session, and the resolution that is before you does reflect the recommendations of the CDBG Advisory Committee.
I would like to move the resolution, second.
Okay, the resolution has been moved and seconded. Any council questions or comments? Any public comments on this resolution? All right, seeing none, the resolution is before the council. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the resolution passes. We are running somewhat ahead of our schedule. We have a break scheduled at this point. Would the council like to go ahead and take the break or to move on to the next item and take the break in maybe 10 or 15 minutes?
Follow on.
Follow.
Okay. Is that going to cause a problem in terms of staffing these next items?
No, because you're looking at the staff for the next item.
Good, good.
And she's happy to have it continue.
Okay, the next item is a resolution approving the Montgomery County Rebuilding Together Projects and application for tax credits.
Yeah, before you this evening is a resolution of support for the investment tax credit application of rebuilding together Montgomery County. This is a nonprofit volunteer organization that basically provides support to low-income elderly and disabled homeowners in terms of making repairs. What they, they are in the process of submitting an application for tax credits, and the support of the local jurisdiction is required prior to any approval of their request.
I would like to move the resolution, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any council comments on this resolution?
It's a great program.
Well, actually, it should be noted that the city has a history with rebuilding together. For a number of years, city staff participated in a rebuilding together project in Tacoma Park where they picked the home of somebody who was disabled and low-income and helped put the, do a number of repairs and renovations on the home. I participated in one of those. I know Councilmember Williams actually probably participated in all of them and was absolutely essential in terms of having, I don't want to say the only expertise, but certainly more expertise than anyone else in terms of pulling off those projects. And I don't know if it's something else that the staff would like to reinstitute, but I think it was a really good project and was, I hope that the gratitude of the residents made the staff feel that, you know, they had been able to touch some of our city residents in a very direct way, maybe more direct than they do on a day-to-day basis on their jobs, and I hope they felt the appreciation. So, that might be another thing to do. And it provided sort of an opportunity for a number of our staff members who turned out to have a certain amount of experience in doing these kinds of projects to show off their skills. I'm not one of those people who had a certain kind of experience. I think what I got to do is dig holes for plants or sweep up floors, but there was also, there's also room for people like that. But we might want to take a look at reinstituting that. I thought it was a particularly good project.
I would like to agree with you, Mayor Porter. I think it was good, and I think it was also an opportunity for some of the police officers that participated in that program to get to know the residents and the residents to get to know them better, too.
I was actually amazed at the amount of skill in installing cabinetry that's contained in our police department in the project that I worked on. All right, the resolution is before the council. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the resolution passes.
Mayor, if I may, before we go on to the next item, I did want to take this opportunity just to let our residents know that Rebuilding Together hopes to do work on 110 homes in the Tacoma Park area in the spring and fall of 2007. So, they are looking for interested parties who might like their assistance. Any resident who believes they qualify can certainly contact Rebuilding Together Montgomery County directly, or they can actually get an application by calling Linda Walker of our staff, and she can be reached at 301-891-7222.
Do you have any idea what those qualifications are?
Yes, I do. The recipient of any assistance must own their own home and have a household income, and it depends on the number of folks in the household. For a one-person household, it's no more than $29,000. A two-person household, the threshold is $33,000, and that amount increases by $4,000 for each additional member of the household.
Thank you.
And I think, if I remember correctly, a number of people apply, and then they select from among the people who apply based on their perception of the individual's need for this assistance.
That's correct.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the second reading of the pilot authorization for-
Move it, second.
641 Houston Avenue. Any additional comments?
I'm just really happy that this project came to fruition and that the threat of evictions is over with.
Okay, any additional council comments? Any public comments on this ordinance? Seeing no comments, this is the second reading of the ordinance. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter?
Aye.
Councilmember Austin Lane?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Elrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Wade?
Aye.
The ordinance passes at second reading. Next item is the first reading of an ordinance which amends our residential parking permit Area 5 to essentially correct a, an error in that ordinance. I don't know, Councilmember Clay, would you like to move this and then say anything you'd like to say?
I would like to move this ordinance.
Second.
So, we were so specific when the ordinance was originally drafted that on New Hampshire Avenue, we listed the four addresses that were in the section of road, but then there's also a section of road that doesn't have any addresses, and so, we're just cleaning this up so that the whole stretch between the two streets can be included, between Belford and Prince George's, and that we don't exclude the area then that didn't actually have a residential front on that street. Does that make sense?
So, what you're saying is that this short space was intended to be included in the original legislation, but since you did it by, you outlined the area by specifying addresses, the area that did not have a residential address in front of it got left out by mistake?
Yes.
Got it. Okay, the ordinance has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comments on the ordinance? Is there any public comments on the ordinance? All right, seeing none. This is the first reading of the ordinance. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the resolution, the ordinance, I'm sorry, passes at first reading. We'll bring it back for second reading, I think we can do that shortly. Why don't we just keep going? The next ordinance is the first reading of an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the FY07 budget. This is amendment number two, and this is the ordinance that the city manager referred to that she could amend before second reading, which I think is a good idea, so it allows us to give public notice before the council deals with it to include the decision that the council just made on the funding for Carroll Avenue improvements.
Move the ordinance, second.
As I moved and seconded, is there anything you wanted to say just to-
No, I just thought it might be helpful for anyone watching just to kind of very quickly go through what is encompassed by this budget amendment. The vast majority of the items basically have to deal with any kind of grant-funded projects that we anticipated would be done by June 30th, where some residual work is kind of falling over into FY07. That includes several playground projects at Totally Fraser Park and Hefner Park under the Community Parks and Playgrounds Program. As the council is aware, we also have an arrangement with Montgomery County regarding the renovation of 7133 Carroll, which is Tahitiya House related to the fire station project. The city is, has directly contracted with the contractor for this project, and then we are reimbursed by Montgomery County for any cost associated with that renovation work. There is still some ongoing work that should be completed soon, so the Public Works Director did ask that the budget for that project be amended to reflect the expenditure of funds this fiscal year. Similarly, we had, in a prior year, actually, in June 2005, received a payment for our insurance company to repair some sewage backup damage in the basement of this building. That work was started in FY06, the very latter part, and we will basically need to be making payment to the contractor this year. The council had actually addressed this in a prior budget amendment in FY06, but the funds were just not expended during last fiscal year. The last item, and the one I just wanted to take just a few moments, because it also has some practical implications. As you may recall from this year's budget process, when you met with the Public Works Director, she anticipated spending about $91,000 in street bond proceeds this fiscal year. As she advised you at that time, a number of the streets scheduled for resurfacing were also streets where WSSC planned to do some work. And basically, we, for understandable reasons, have held off doing that resurfacing work until WSSC could come in and, you know, prepare their lines. At this point, it's really unclear when WSSC will actually undertake their work. We obviously don't want to resurface a street and then have it torn up at some future date. So, the Public Works Director has recommended that we go ahead and move forward with some of the streets that were originally scheduled for FY08 and FY09 and go ahead and expedite those streets. That includes several sections of the New Hampshire Service Road, Winchester Avenue, and Willow Avenue. What this means from a financial standpoint is that we will spend more this year in street bond proceeds than we had anticipated. It would have been spent eventually, it's just a matter of the timing in terms of expending those funds. So, the budget amendment that is before you this evening would actually increase the amount of street bond proceeds to be expended by roughly $68,000. And basically, if you recall, the street bond proceeds are in a restricted portion of the fund balance, and it just means that amount will be drawn down quicker. So, if there's any questions about the amendment, be happy to answer them, as the mayor indicated. What you'll see on the second reading will basically reflect the action you took this evening regarding the Carroll Avenue Streetscape Project.
I have a note in the margin on this paper to ask you. My street is one of those that is being torn up by WSSC, and it's being torn up at what appears to be, to an untrained eye, a very leisurely page. And I'm wondering if, this is not something you have to answer right at the moment, but if you could get me any information for myself and my neighbors as to what the completion date might be and whether we are already too late to get it resurfaced this year or whether we are wait, whether we're looking on, looking at waiting until this spring.
Sure, I'll be happy to touch base with the Public Works Director, and I'm sure she'll need to discuss with WSSC what their timeline is.
I could tell you, Willow Avenue just got started, so I think you still have time.
Can I piggyback on to the mayor's comments that the folks at the corner of Devonshire and Elm, I don't know if they've contacted you or not, but they've been talking to the contract manager who's out there on the project, and they are apparently going to dig right under, kind of shortcut across their property instead of staying in the street line, as best as I can understand. So, as they shortcut across the public right of way, they're going to lose all of this landscaping that they've done and a staircase that they have, and if there's any way they could just stay in the street line or, you know, closer to the curb line instead of taking a shortcut across the property, that would be great.
I'll be happy to follow up. Councilmember Clay?
Any other?
If I can just observe that it would seem that the utilities somehow take a perverse delight in working very slowly on the streets of council members.
You've noticed that yourself?
There's a history there.
Well, that, we were all told to keep our cars off the street, and I noticed all day today, everybody was very good and moved their- and I noticed all day today, everybody was very good and moved their cars and not a WSSC showed up. So it tends to make people annoyed when they, you know, move their cars, you know, around the corner and down the block.
Did you talk to your councilman?
I'm thinking of calling my councilman and complaining.
I had trouble with them when I first moved in because I didn't have- they wouldn't come and deal with the shut- my interior shut off. And they looked for it in a year and a half and couldn't find it until finally I got this bigger-than-a-pinhole leak in my house. And I called them and I told them I was going to get a sledgehammer and knock out the line if they didn't come out. And they found it miraculously, after a year and a half of searching, they found it within an hour.
Well, I'm not- we haven't got-
You're not suggesting that approach?
No, no.
Not that desperate yet.
No, not yet.
Learned a lot about you tonight.
I know.
So what we have in front of us, to move, get back to the business at hand, what we have in front of us is a-
I could book.
Is an ordinance regarding the second amendment to the FY07 budget. Is there any additional council comment? Is there any public comment on this ordinance at first reading? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ordinance passes at first reading. We have- it's nine o'clock, we have two additional items. I'll give the council the choice, we can either take a break or just keep moving.
The consent agenda?
We have the consent agenda and then one work session item. Okay, all right. The consent agenda consists of a series of resolutions, making appointments to the Committee on the Environment, the Ethics Commission, the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee, Safe Roadways Committee, and the Tree Commission.
Move the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, the consent agenda is not open to discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the consent agenda passes. The final item in front of the council this evening is a work session item, which talks about a loan option for the city's essentially retirement programs for city employees.
Just very briefly, the city does have a 457 or deferred compensation plan. This is a voluntary plan in which employees can participate. As the mayor alluded to, this plan was established without a loan provision. Over the past number of years, the city periodically has received requests from employees to basically make emergency withdrawals from their accounts. This could be for a variety of reasons, any kind of unexpected home expense, legal expenses. Because our plan does not have a loan provision, basically, there's nothing the city can do to honor those requests. And I should mention that, for the most part, the city does have a minor matching provision. It's very minimal. So the 457 plan, to a large extent, basically reflects the employee's voluntary setting aside of his or her own funds. What is before you this evening, just for discussion purposes, is to get your thoughts on whether or not we should incorporate a loan provision into our 457 deferred compensation plan. Basically, from the perspective of Karen Hampton, our Human Resources Manager, who's usually the first point of contact with employees who have this request. This would basically just provide employees with a little more flexibility in terms of this benefit program. As proposed, participants would be able to receive one loan per calendar year. They could only have one loan at a time. And that the suggested minimum loan amount would be $1,000, just to make sure it doesn't almost become sort of a bank account, if you will. If the council is amenable to this, there would be a resolution presented to you in the very near future. There would actually be two resolutions. One would be to amend the plan to provide for loans. The second would basically provide for any type of repayment of that loan to be done by automatic debit or ACH from the employee bank accounts. This would sort of ensure that it's a fairly streamlined process, that there's not a lot of administrative burden to the city. And it would just automatically be deducted from the employee's bank account in accordance with the repayment provisions for his or her loan. So really, what I'm looking for this evening is just to see if the council is open to this. As I mentioned, there would be two resolutions that would be presented to you in the near future if you are amenable to this plan.
Just a couple of questions. Are all employees eligible for this? Or is it certain categories?
For the 457?
Yes.
It's open to any employee.
Anybody, okay. So it doesn't matter whether, whatever, however they're sliced and diced, everybody's eligible?
That's correct. It's a benefit available to all employees. There are IRS provisions in terms of the amount that can be set aside. Essentially, you're setting aside money for retirement on a tax-deferred basis.
And the- are you essentially borrowing money from your deferred comp amount? Or are you borrowing from something else?
If the loan provision is approved, it would essentially be a withdrawal from the employee would take his or her own 457 account and then they would be repaying his or her own account.
Okay, so that if they, if there were bad circumstances and somebody left and this was outstanding, it's all kind of coming out of money that they've put aside anyway?
That's correct.
It's just access to it?
That's correct.
Okay. And I want to be in favor of this. I do have to say that I was a little bit taken aback at the examples that were used for the types of requests that have come when it was for, I can understand loans for legal expenses. I'm not sure I can understand normal monthly expenses or routine home maintenance. It doesn't seem like those are very good things to borrow for.
No, I mean, obviously, what that may suggest is that the employee needs to kind of examine how much he or she is having set aside to make sure that they have sufficient cash left to make any kind of routine expenses.
So I would hope these would be for more emergency-type things than those.
What I can do before the resolutions are presented to the council is talk to Karen Hampton and see in terms of the way the amendment to the plan is drafted, if there- if we have the flexibility to perhaps more clearly delineate those circumstances that we deem to be appropriate, you know, and at least do a little research in that regard.
That would be helpful, thanks.
If I could just follow up on the point that Bruce made, I had the same concern. And I wonder if it would be possible to, like, set a top limit on loans, except for certain purposes? I know that the similar program that in my former workplace had, you could take out loans, I think there were like five different reasons, and beyond that, you couldn't. And if we're allowing things for any purpose, maybe we could, you know, put a limit on the non-extraordinary. And then if there's some way we could also, if someone is repeatedly taking out loans, if we could figure out a way to sort of require some credit counseling or something like that. It does seem that, you know, putting some kind of limit on it to just avoid getting people so in debt for the purpose of, you know, normal monthly expenses that they can't get out.
As suggested, there would only be one outstanding loan at a time, so there would be a mechanism, if you will, to keep someone from constantly taking out loans. I think would, even if that's the case, I think what you're alluding to, Mayor, is not wanting this to become a practice, that it be for extraordinary circumstances only. My guess would be that could probably be done. I've worked in a couple of communities where the only circumstances under which you could withdraw money or take a loan were fairly unusual circumstances. You had, you know, bad storm damage at your home or some medical expenses that weren't covered or something of that nature. Terry, we can explore that.
Thank you. And I have to admit, I read this with some hesitancy. And it's really based on kind of our history of difficulty in managing programs such as grants and the stormwater fees. And also with our difficulty historically in managing sick leave usage and apparent abuse of sick leave. And so I think that at this point, before I could support a resolution, I would need to know more and understand better maybe what the controls and how we're going to administer the program.
Sure, we can bring that back. My understanding, Councilmember Stevens, and I'll confirm this with Ms. Hampton, is that the repayment would basically be between ICMA RC, the 457 carrier, and debits from the employee's bank account. So the city would really not be involved in the repayment process. Basically, that would be an arrangement between those two parties.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
In addition to the point I made before, I have to say I have sort of mixed feelings about this. On the one hand, I do have the concern, very similar to what Bruce expressed. On the other hand, I know I've heard about these, what are they called, payday loans, where people can borrow against their next paycheck and they're charged extraordinarily high rates of interest. And certainly, it would be good to give people, at least for serious sort of emergency-type situations, another alternative to that. And, you know, anyone could get into an emergency-type situation where, you know, something happened that you needed to get some money. And I wouldn't want to describe, I wouldn't want to send them to one of those very high, you know, high-interest-rate loan operations for something like that. But I think if we keep it to those kinds of serious emergency situations, I would be comfortable with that.
Would the council like us to come back in another, I guess, taking into account your comments and certainly see what we can do to respond to them? Would you like us to come back in another work session? Or assuming we can address your concerns, are you comfortable with it coming back in the form of a resolution? Just want to clarify so we know how to proceed.
I guess from my point of view, it would kind of depend on what you come back with.
Okay, we'll work with the mayor then once he gets more information.
Okay, is that the information that you needed? Well, we are, we may be setting a record for early evenings this evening, since it is only 10 minutes after 9:00 and we have completed our agenda. Unless there is something else, we are adjourned.